No, sometimes they do if you don't know why.
Are you ready?
Did you put the tape on?
Spam.
Daryl, did you put the tape on, sir?
Not yet. Are you ready?
You don't have to yell at me.
Sure.
It's not in there, it doesn't.
There's a way not to do that.
These chairs are on the court.
I got to yell at Daryl.
It is 7:30. Can't you look at Facebook later? I think it is. I don't see it here. Or in my, uh, my other phone.
Joe, sad this has set date and time.
Hit the red one.
Joe says set date and time. We'll just run through it.
Sorry to run late this evening. I had technical difficulties.
When you put no batteries.
We're good. We're live.
You're live.
Up here. Welcome, and this is, I'd like to call the board. The Village of Webster regular meeting, September 14th, September 17th. And I would like to ask this evening, Al, could you lead us?
Absolutely.
This evening, I would like to begin with actually two proclamations or two presentations. The first one, I would like to read for everyone. If you were not at the 9/11 memorial ceremony on Monday evening, then you missed the presentation. But I would like to read a proclamation from the New York State Senate. It was presented to the Village of Webster by State Senator Pam Helming on Monday evening. And it reads this. Proclamation commemorating the Village of Webster's 16th Annual 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony on September 11th, 2017, in Veterans Memorial Park. Whereas it is the intent of the New York State Senate to publicly commemorate significant moments in the history of our state and nation, and to recognize individuals and organizations who hold in ceremonies, to honor these momentous occasions, and whereas September 11th, 2001, was undoubtedly one of the darkest days in our history when New York State, the United States of America, were the victims of a vicious and horrific terrorist attack on the World Trade Center, the Pentagon, and Flight 93. Whereas though the terrorists crashed our planes, knocked down our buildings, and killed our people, they could not and never will break our spirit and damage our resolve as American citizens who live in a great nation that stands for liberty and justice for all. And whereas the United States of America continues to battle terrorism around the world with members of our nation's military serving in Afghanistan, Iraq, and elsewhere overseas in defense of our American freedoms and the safety and security of our people, and whereas many people from throughout the Finger Lakes region have served in our nation's military as part of the anti-terrorism mission since the 9/11 attacks. And whereas since that date, 16 years ago, communities across our nation and our state and throughout the Finger Lakes region have paused and gathered together on this anniversary to remember the nearly 3,000 of our fellow American citizens whom we lost that day. And whereas the Village of Webster has held a 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony every year since 2002, the first anniversary of this terrible tragedy, that takes place by the Veterans Monument that the village established in Veterans Memorial Park with people around the village attending. And whereas special recognition should be given for the outstanding efforts of the communities, such as the Village of Webster, that continue to pay tribute to the victims of 9/11 every year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that I, New York State Senator Pamela A. Helming proudly recognize the Village of Webster for holding its 16th Annual 9/11 Remembrance Ceremony on September 11th, 2017, in Veterans Memorial Park to honor our country and its people. And be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation be presented to the Village of Webster dated September 11th, 2017. I think that's a tremendous statement about the concern of this village and this community for what happened on that day. So I really appreciated the presentation that she made, the proclamation to the New York State Senate. And I went to frame that, and we'll be putting that up in the Capitol. The second proclamation is purely a service recognition. In this day and age, it's kind of, I'd say, in a way unique in that people stay in a job for any length of time. But tonight, we have the honor of presenting a certificate for 25 years of service to the Village of Webster. This reads, "New York State Conference of Mayors and the Municipal Officials present this 25-year certificate of public service to John Conavalli. In recognition of 25 years of distinguished public service to your community, the New York State Conference of Mayors is pleased and honored to publicly acknowledge your dedication and commitment." And I think that says an awful lot. I know that, as we just had recently, a report on our wastewater treatment plant by Mr. Chung, his comment that the plant is, for its age, in very good condition. Yes, there are things that we need to do to upgrade and to maybe bring that to some of the standards that have changed since its inception. But I think that that's due, that statement, that the plant, for its age, is in good shape, is a tribute to John and the guys that are down there. I know that he is, you know, always looking to maintain what's there and to upgrade. So I commend him for the job that he does and for Kevin and Bob as well. So I'm sorry that he could not be here this evening, but we will make sure that he... And now we will move to public comment. I thought he would like to address the board this evening. Nope, name and address.
Good evening, I'm Richard Walter, 20 Elm Street, the first thing. I would like to, since they were recently removed for a ceremony, I would like to correct, put the American flag in its position of honor closest to the speaker on the other side.
As we looked it up when we were down at the park and the guy with the gun won, police officer said it went the other way, so I said, oh, your arm and not. Nothing to say.
Yeah, I know, I talked to the math at a ceremony, corrected it. If anybody'd like a copy, I do have a copy appropriate. I'm an old voicemail. Tonight, I just asked that either tonight or sometime in the future, the immediate future, like the next meeting, maybe we could get a report on the progress with the cell tower. I see there's a lot of stuff going on up there. There are antennas up, there are buildings being set near the base of the cell towers. And I'd like to have a report sometime here tonight or in the immediate future on that. And what's going to happen to the old tower, which is already stayed, what's going to come down, who's taking it down, the village, the county, or what, just exactly what's going on with that. And that's all I'm asking tonight, is if that could be a public presentation sometime in the near future.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
There was a holdup as we were waiting for our G and E to come in, install the pole, and the electric service, I believe that it was put in.
Yes.
Service is now in place.
This, this wires run across the street, it's got to be connected on the top, and typically they have something there energized when they do that.
And Verizon has been on the tower. You see the antennas that are there, they have the middle section, the other two, T-Mobile and AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T will be going to the top. And T-Mobile has, we think, we believe, has finalized in the contract with the lawyers and will be coming to us probably within the next week for us to sign and them to sign. So moving forward with that, but we'll give you more of an update next time.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking. And I wouldn't like to, well, that would be under, if there's no other public comment, then we will move to Village Board business. And the first item on there is a review and approval of minutes for the Village Board meeting of August 24th. And I would like to say that as Kathy Williams spoke to us, especially about maintaining in front of the North Adam Morgan Development, the weeds they have been taken down, have been mowed, and it does look much better. I thank her for that prompting, I guess if you would call it that, but...
I'll tell her if she waits with me.
Does she? So we appreciate that. Has everybody had a chance to read through?
Yes.
One thing that I would note, it's been under office, you may note that this is, the transfers for the Engineering Professional Services and PLC program maintenance is also on tonight's agenda. I believe that there were some questions, and they have been answered since then. And we did not vote on it, but we will vote tonight. Any other questions? If not, I will eliminate a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I know that some of these went out early because of the hurricanes, Harvey and Irma, and the idea that we wanted to have things getting to where they were going in time of the matter, so that we will not charge for the delay if there was a delay. But if there are any questions, I had the opportunity to look them over and sign them, and I like to give two.
Any other questions?
Anyone else?
No, Richard.
I do not have any, so if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I can make a motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This evening, the third item here for discussion and for possible approval has to do with the federal government's idea of eliminating the deductibility of local and state taxes when filing federal income taxes. Part of a new debate going on in Washington. And I would like to make note of the fact, just read a little bit about this. The century-old deduction of state and local income taxes called SALT is heavily utilized by residents of New York State. Approximately 3.2 million New Yorkers claim their state and local taxes as deductions on their federal returns with an average deduction of around $7,000, not me, but $7,182. Notwithstanding our reliance on this long-standing deduction, New York remains a donor state because what we get back from the federal government is less than what New York State residents are paying into the federal treasury. So just writing to, this was written to me, and I'm making sure that you know that the threat to SALT deduction is very real. Time is now for all New Yorkers, including municipal officers, to fight to kill any federal tax reform like this, and it would lead to double taxation, as you would be paying federal income tax on taxes that you've already paid to the state and local governments, which does not seem right. So in lieu of that, what I have here and will read is a resolution. The Village of Webster opposes elimination of the deductibility of state and local taxes. Whereas Congress is giving serious consideration to eliminating the federal income tax deduction for state and local taxes. Whereas this deduction, which has been in place for more than 100 years, is heavily utilized by residents in our community and our state, whereas New York residents already pay more with the federal treasury than the federal government returns to New York. And whereas the state and local tax deduction is a fundamental principle of federalism, and without it, our residents would be faced with double taxation, because they would be forced to pay federal income tax on the taxes that they pay to state and local governments. And whereas this federal cost shift unto local governments would place extreme pressure on municipal budgets, including diminished revenue for essential local government investments, including public safety and public infrastructure, whereas increased federal taxation and reduced municipal services will harm our local housing market, decrease home values, and erode our local tax base. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Webster, New York, expresses its strong opposition to any tax reform proposal that would, excuse me, eliminate the state and local tax SALT reduction, and urges Senator Kristin Gillibrand, Senator Charles Schumer, Representative Louise Slaughter, State Senator Pamela Helming, Assemblyman Mark Johns to join us in publicly opposing any such proposal. I intend to pass this on to them, whether it passes or fails, by vote, and to let them know that we have at least considered this. And so I would entertain, or first of all, any questions, any comments at all? It is. Then if there isn't, and if you are in support of this, I would entertain a motion to pass this resolution so that it can be sent on to our representatives.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
This will be sent to those representatives that I listed, and if any of you that are watching or here in the audience, if you would like to express your dissatisfaction with that as well, the addresses can be found, or you can call the village, and we can provide them to you for the, your representatives, both at the state level, federally in Congress and the Senate, and also the House as well, as local as well. Thank you, and we will move on. Done? Anything?
No, I don't know, I don't have anything this evening.
Seems like there's a button cover.
No, no button.
It's not like someone else is going.
All quiet.
He wants to get off the Cincinnati-Houston game.
Okay, Compton Overtime Report, August 2017. The report is there. It looks like we had a lot of calling and overtime. Jake, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure, a review of the columns, primarily three and a half, four hours is watering on the weekends, watering all the plants and flowers, coming about 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, and water those when there's no vehicles on the road. The higher ones there, the 14th and the 13th, were watering in conjunction with Jazz Festival. There is also, there made a Jazz Festival for those, it was captured that week, the 22nd of July, so...
Okay, July, sure.
And then the, typically that overtime, mill and pave, when we, the day we milled, it looked like there was a half hour to two hours of overtime, it's kind of spread out depending on, you know, where, what function they were doing that day, and then when we paved, they extended out, it was one to two, depending on where they were, if they were at the end of it or at the beginning of it, wrapping up, so.
I think I have a question, it's good, yeah.
Brings us to sewer fund budget modification, and I would like to say that as I was looking at this, there is something that I said we would be doing, that we were asked to do, and in the future we will make note of it, and it will be done, and that brought to the attention that there is a sewer department, there used to be a water department, and that some things should be listed separately, and it is not. So just letting you know that it will be dealt with. So here we have what we talked about last time you were here, and we had some questions on it, so it was not voted upon, but we had two budget modifications. One, a transfer from, transfer reserve to the Engineering Professional Services. This was for those additional services that were beyond the scope of the Water Treatment Plant Study, that was done by Colin Chung, and so we need to pay for those. And the second is a, we ought to do it, can we do it together? Can we do it separately?
You can do it together.
And the second is from the, again, transfer to reserve to the PLC Program Maintenance, and that is because of our storm, the rain and lightning storm, and I do believe that it kind of blew some things out. This, I believe, was done with the sewer department, although I'm hoping that we have, and I believe we have, solved that particular issue. So if I can have a motion to fund these, uh, budget modifications.
I'll make it.
Second?
Trustee Abolito?
Aye.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Wow, so enthusiasm tonight.
Okay. You've come to the part of the meeting that might be the shortest. Although Jake, you've been out for a while, so you might have a lot of things to report for us, so.
More time in the public works.
More importantly, I think the whole cop, or the whole audit document, so I can go for a long time, but we're, we're going. We got the, you know, getting everything done, it's happening, it's happening, that catch-up on metal, you guys working today for the sewer department, you mentioned that, they work with the town, used to utilize their main camera over on East Main Street. As you might know, that on the north side of East Main Street, the sewer main is behind houses. There was one manhole that was, we've tried and thrown and fought to try to find this thing, and at some point it was buried over across the street from me, near Doc Grayson's there. Working the town, we were able to put their new camera up the line, find out where the manhole is, and then get in there. Today, we dug it out, built the manhole up. Some point, he said it was buried before he put the addition on for the carriager office, so it's been a long time, then it got buried. Periodically, we were looking to locate, as we found it today, got it built up, they raised it, they're putting the new manhole cover in that on, or the riser on it tomorrow and stuff, so we're going to get that back, but that was, that was happy news. Our reflection system, the diagnostics that work continues down there, the pipes are all in, been air tested, they're going to take the scaffold out very soon, and look at getting, getting everything back in, back in order. I think that's, found it, the new trucks, the POs have been sent, I've got a follow-up with the supplier though, still seems like we're there. We're continuing to work on the Clean Communities Initiative and see what we can do there as far as the funding development, and that's for people that meet certain criteria, and do a couple of, they call high-impact items, high-impact items, if you inform, you can get a certain subsidy, and get some funds that are available, so we're continuing to try to do that. And I think next week, I think we're going to be almost full force everywhere in the whole village, and it can be very exciting.
Cemetery events?
Cemetery events, I talked to Ed Atkinson quite a while ago, and we were going to, I know there are some discussions, maybe I'll have to pop in next time there's a historic preservation, because we had talked about trying, our initial thought was to try to have it there before the parade, and in fact, it was said, I talked to him before the parade, it was a couple of weeks before the parade, and he's like, no, I'd rather, because I said we're going to have a real trouble finding the Larch, and it's a lot of suppliers are Amish, they're difficult to call on the phone. I have been trying to follow up at Larch or Locust, hopefully be real good, you know, from what I understand, Larch is even better though, so if we get those folks to make them out of that, they should help us with the maintenance aspect of it. So again, if they want to let me know what the next historic preservation, may I come in on the front side of there, if they're answering something?
Yeah, I can get you on the schedule.
Now, this is going to, it shut off on me for, I don't know why, I just said it was going to shut off, so I was going to come up as soon as everything's done. It's on, though.
You're done?
Yeah, stopping with everyone.
Yes, next Tuesday at 7:00. No, we not have, we don't.
I was dovetailing with what Jake is talking about in terms of the clean community. We are looking to hopefully get our name in the hat for six awards of $50,000 that are still out there to invest in our community. And one of the, one of the things that we need to do is establish benchmark requirements for municipality, so we're looking, we're looking at a resolution, probably as opposed to a local law, setting, establishing that, that this community, the Village of Webster, will work towards, towards that in terms of saving energy. So there are possibilities of a number of things. One of them is that the co-enforcement officer would attend training classes. There is the possibility of taking a look, as we talked about vehicle replacements, looking at a solar vehi, or that sort of an electric vehicle. I was thinking of the lawnmower, as you were talking about, or a solar vehicle. Jake was telling me about a lawnmower that was on electricity, and the electricity comes from solar panels at the top of the panel of the lawnmower, so. Could be a cloudy day, if it's stuck somewhere out there in Shannon Park or whatever.
Cloudy day.
Anyways, we're working on that, and I believe that we'll soon be moving forward on some of those action items, so just let you know that. Anything that you guys have?
Beer walk this Saturday, 4:07.
I would let you know that a little bit more information than that, that if you are going to pay cash for a ticket, you can get that at the coach. If you're going to use a credit card, you can go online, www.westerbig.com, and you can click on the beer walk and use your credit card. and you can click on the beer walk, and you can get your credit card in there, and then take a look. That's from four to seven. I would mention also that the charity to which the money is going is the Miracle Field, which was, which had ripping cutting just a couple of weeks ago. They're looking to continue the process of covering one of the dugouts, and also they are looking to fund between now and next year the restrooms and a concession stand.
Should we talk about that more? Should we talk about that more as a, for?
Are we, yes, we are.
In the conversation, you and I talked about.
Right. Your brother talks about a wiffle ball tournament, I thought the Village would have a wiffle ball team to do that.
Do it.
Well, we would be proud of that.
No, I'm sorry to talk.
That would be fun.
I don't know, yes, but we.
Couple hundred plays.
We have about 300 to 400,000, I think, we have left to raise.
You do, yeah, a couple hundred dollars a team, but it's not gonna get a bunch of paid out there. Maybe it's down to the returning firm, play against us.
Do it during the winter.
Ex-mayors.
Yeah.
Don't go there.
I did.
I want to thank all who attended and those who participated in the ninth memorial ceremony, before that. I would also like to note that we have had a very nice response from the community in terms of individuals who want to become a part of village government. We've had an inquiry, of course, we've filled the position of planning board alternate. We've had an inquiry, and probably will soon fill the zoning board of appeals alternate position. There are several who have indicated parks and rec committee, and Judy, you talked about the historic preservation commission. So, I do thank everybody for their response. Saturday, this Saturday, September 16th, from 7:45 until 1 o'clock at the Town of Webster Highway Department on Picture Parkway. They are having the East Side Household Hazardous Place Collection Day. Town of Penfield, Town of Webster, and the Village of Webster combined together in terms of providing manpower for this. It is by appointment only, so if you want to schedule an appointment, and you want to know what it is that you can bring to the collection site, because they are not taking everything, there are certain limitations in terms of these household items. You can go on the Town of Webster's website. They have a very complete list of things to take. Also, to schedule an appointment, you can call 872-1443. And that's 872-1443 to schedule an appointment. Right, and I believe it's two days ago, because they asked for more manpower to help out. On Saturday, they had 550 scheduled appointments at this time.
Wow, 588.
588 now?
Wow.
I mean, they're not limiting the appointment number. They will take everybody, they just ask for more help in terms of the towns and village supplying the help. So, if you have anything, again, you want to go and check out what it is that they do take in terms of paints or other things around the house or whatever. Go check that out at the Town of Webster website, and that complete list is there, okay? I don't think it's up on ours, it should be, but. One other thing I would mention in that is that the next time that we meet here on September 28th, we will be giving a proclamation, but that day is designated, it will be designated that evening as the Village of Webster Band Day, celebrating and honoring their 50 years of service and entertainment to the Village of Webster. Their banquet is in October, but when I visited them, the, that last concert, we didn't have a board meeting on a Thursday, I did let them know that we would be doing that. That will be on the 20th of September. And if I, if you have to.
I have a suggestion. I don't know if this is right, but I, I think that we should get together with Charlotte Pitt Simmons, and Cambry, Morgan, and Stefano for a little chat, you know, to stay gathering to find out a little bit more about their plans as far as when they're gonna finish. You know, do they have any further plans?
So Matt and Will haven't been up to date on any of the stuff, but they don't have a separate.
I think it would be good to, to actually have those guys in my class to say, hey guys, thanks a lot for what you're doing, and, you know, really putting our village back together in special and general. And, you know, himself, he's rebuilding.
Read the article in the paper tonight.
First.
You learn more in the article than.
I know, I read it.
Than any of you people have told me.
Yes.
Got the dates when things are gonna happen.
Yeah, that's what I said, I read it today.
You know, I have a bad, bad.
Well, maybe Matt didn't know, but.
Well, but Will, I thought Will should, I've been asking.
Just have, Carl, appreciate your suggestions, please.
Yeah, maybe a workshop and send out an invitation to them to come and talk to us. All of them?
Yeah, sure, the four of them, yeah. Stefano, Morgan, Cambry, and, you know.
Greg's, Greg's, well, no, Greg Owen's over there too, so I don't know who's attending to put in. They're coming along very well with the, with the.
I just like.
And Dablewood, he had a fat tow upper, I think they stole something like 800 pounds of piping or whatever. They're in the middle of the night.
Rebar.
Rebar, rebar, something.
If you're trying to steal and steal, and it's, I get anything, just get it, but. But I just thought, maybe a big thank you, you know, from all of us or something, even maybe written, some kind of a written thing, formal written proclamation or something, things or events. I think the issue is.
Well, let's see what they're doing first.
Such a. Yeah, and Stefano's moving along really slow.
Good year.
Where do we stand with that?
With who?
Oh, yeah.
Again, themselves acting.
Yeah, very much.
I rolled that the other day, and we all just had nothing, but I know what.
We just got the, it was a BPS five form for the public sewers, it's sanitary sewer portion, it's gonna get dedicated to the village, they saw it over that form, and then has to come, just be signed by somebody in the village. It's, you know, it works, usually it's the mayor or myself would sign that form, which is basically making sure the form's filled out correctly. But Will's gonna add some more questions on that, because the last plans that I saw, some of the sewer manholes, you know, we have a maximum of 300 feet in between the manholes, and they were, they exceeded that. We may know that, send it back to them. I have not got a final plan yet, and sign off on it or review or make sure that they have those changes. I noted those, so I don't know exactly when they're in that process. But I think we did get something there, I do want to, relative to that property transfer too, for those.
I think a lot is going on right now in the background, okay, with Ricky.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of things there, there's a, really, there's a lot going on everywhere. And if, you know, when Will, when Will was out, I had to try to do some of those things too. And there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of different things happening all around, and it's pretty neat. You know, there's new businesses going here at 13 South Avenue pretty quickly. Heart Care moved in down to the old Palm Wire Building, Commercial Street. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of things going on. Who does remember, let us see, science man.
What's going in 13 South?
It's a company that helps, my understanding, a company that helps people if they have diamonds or jewelry or things like that, build and market those, get, you know, get a breakers or if they're hiring stuff to sell those, and man, helping manage a set of larger, better jewelry pieces and assets like that. I don't know, on their website, there is some repair, it's one of the things, I don't know if you know it, if you restore it, if it's mostly service, or if it's, I mean, I don't know.
You have to ask questions, I got dropped.
I said one other thing too, if I can, this will really be fast. I talked to Gennett Hall, we talked to Billy Wirth the other day from Kimmelberger. They're the ones that do the pots on Main Street, and I, I was at, everywhere I go, I was at Dennis' the other day, everybody in there. Everybody, they did a great job this year, the bid, I want to thank the bid too, they provided the plant flowers and everything for them. That being said, we were talking about the timing of them, he's gonna let us know when, when they're done, and we should call him up. Obviously, the weather might tell us beforehand, but hopefully not. But he's gonna let us know when it should come up. What he suggested, what the kind of the plan was, is to take those down, we always store inside the big mold bar down at the Super Street plant. So let them, there's some plants that have to come out, but there's those big ones in the center.
Can they stay in until next year?
Well, they, but they're tropical, the bulb's gonna come out. They start, but they start the bulbs in the greenhouse, he doesn't have, he doesn't do the greenhouse. Usually he'll start new, new plants, I guess. So the idea, and the discussion they was having, and I guess they're bid assets, because the bid paid for it, so I don't know, but was to have them in there, get them, like the soil dry out, those dry out, harvest them, and then maybe have them up at the village hall for folks to pick up, and maybe see what we have. There's a ton of people asking about them, bid says, and so if we can do that, maybe we may have to say, you know, a couple, couple per address or something like that somehow, I don't know exactly how to do it, but there's, there's a lot of people, so if people want to, y'all, that's the plan right now. And when the pots come off, I think it'll be a couple weeks after that, maybe we can, on our website.
Will they get known?
Yeah, yeah.
Like three of them, out of the four that we planted, only one came out. Brutus, you're playing with the company, you went through.
Yeah, oh, maybe that's.
Well, we know these are good.
Yeah.
I mean, I, yes, I would love that.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be a great idea.
Then we have to check for overhead clearance when we put them in.
All right, well, I think there's nothing more. And I would announce that our next village board meeting is September 28th, followed by our village board workshop on October 3rd. That's it, and the motion to adjourn.
I'll make it in one second.
Trustee Belkane?
Aye.
Trustee Bolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Nancy? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
13, thank you for coming, and thank you for watching.